Hello, good evening. Thank you all for coming this evening. We are going to start right away with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we all could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out this evening. My name is Laura Desner. I'm also here tonight with Lindsay Fox, who is my co-president of the Coordinated Parent Council, which are sponsoring this evening. Your parent councils of high school, middle school, Bayville Elementary, Locust Valley Elementary, and your PTA, Septa. Tonight, we are happy to have with us the League of Women Voters, East Nassau, who is going to moderate our event for this evening. So I'm just going to turn it over and get the evening started. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank all of you for sponsoring the program this evening. Give you the opportunity to meet the candidates running for Locust Valley School Board. There are three people running for two seats. Also, please, we want questions, questions, questions to ask the candidates. And welcome to all of you who are watching us live streaming. Thank you for joining us as well this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. The League never supports candidates, encourages informed and active participation in government. In keeping with our nonpartisan policy, myself and our timekeeper and our better are not residents of this district. All are welcome to join the League because it's not for women only. At this point, I'd like to introduce the candidates. And I apologize if I mess up on the names, please. Nicholas De La Fera, Michael McGlone, George Bellis Leo. Close. Please hold your applause to the end. And also, please silence your telephones. I'd like to, at this point, explain the format which the candidates have agreed to. As I said before, member of the League of Women Voters from outside the district. Candidates will give opening statements in alphabetical order. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes for an opening statement. And they will have a two-minute closing statement. After all the candidates have spoken, they will each be given one and a half minutes to answer each question. I will rotate the order as I've described with the candidates in rotating order. We have a League member who will act as timekeeper, hold up a sign when you have 30 seconds left, and then when you're asked to stop. The purpose of this meeting is to determine the candidates' views. And therefore, the use of props, charts, or visuals and the distribution of campaign literature is prohibited. Coordinates with League policy or audio of the recording by authorized member of the media we committed only if agreed to. And we agree to retain the rights to coordinate form which we will not. No other recordings are allowed. No partial transcript or recording may be published without written print from the League. And as I said, we're very happy that we are live streaming the program this evening. And we will begin with Nicholas for opening statement.
First off, I'd like to thank the Coordinated Parent Council for putting this together and the League of Women Voters of East Nassau. You know, I'm currently a trustee to Locust Valley School District, a position I've been privileged to hold over the past year. Growing up in this community and graduating from Locust Valley High School has deeply rooted me in our shared values and aspirations, and has been an honor to serve the community and district that has given me so much throughout my life. For those who don't know me, I grew up in Locust Valley as the third of eight children and played competitive sports throughout high school and in college. I attended Drew University and received a degree in economics. I moved back to Locust Valley to start my family with my beloved wife. We have three happy and healthy children, who we will be sending to the Locust Valley Schools when they are of age to attend. Our oldest will be starting that journey in the fall. We love this community and think this school district is one of the best. My professional background's in the pharmaceutical industry, where I serve as a director focusing on commercial development and technical operations. I have extensive expertise with complex contract negotiation, handling legal and regulatory matters, and understanding the financial constructs of an organization. This grants me a unique perspective and skills for my seat on the board. I have experience utilizing a pragmatic vision while communicating with multiple stakeholders, managing complex projects, and leading teams toward common goals, all of which are directly applicable to the governance and strategic planning required in our educational system. During my tenure on the board, I have had the opportunity to build relationships with my fellow board members and administrators to understand the needs of our students and understand and hear from the community so that we can understand the district while trying to build consensus on what the community and the board wants to accomplish in the now and in the future. I'm currently serving on the Budget and Finance Committee, as well as the Facilities Committee, where I have been involved with the development of this year's budget and the careful planning of the practical use of our capital reserves for our facilities, both of which are essential to execute the needed maintenance and updates to our schools' facilities. I consistently advocate for the upholding of parental rights and the enhancement of student safety and security. These are not just policy positions to me, but they are fundamental principles. Our children deserve a secure learning environment where their rights and those of their parents are respected, enabling them to reach their fullest potential. This past year, we've made strides in improving our schools by hiring an action-driven new superintendent, Dr. Kristin Turnout, hosting the first-ever Remembrance Bowl, presenting a fiscally sound budget to the community, and so much more. But there's more work to be done. I'm committed to ensuring that our district not only maintains its current standards but also exceeds them by innovating and adapting to the ever-changing educational landscape. My commitment to you, the community, is to ensure that our schools are safe, supportive, and effective in preparing all our students for success.
Thank you. Michael?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Coordinated Parent Council for hosting this forum tonight, and all that have joined, both in person and virtually, and to allow me the opportunity to share why I wish to serve this fantastic community. By way of introduction, my name is Michael McGlone. My beautiful wife, Ellie, and I, and our three kids, have lived in Locust Valley the last 14 years. Our 20-year-old Bella and our 19-year-old Mikey are international Baccalaureate graduates of Locust Valley, attending University of Southern California and Boston College respectively. Our 10-year-old Christian attends LVI and is completing his fourth-grade year. My wife has served the district as a teacher last 22 years and volunteers as a robotics coach. In our time here, we have met incredible people, many of which we no longer refer. Can you hear me now? In our time here, we have met many incredible people, many of which we no longer refer to as friends, rather, they have truly become family. I'm proud to be here in Locust Valley and plan to be here for many years to come. I'm running for board trustee because I wish to instill more transparency regarding district matters, leveraging methods and skill sets I've developed during my 30-year banking career across three global Tier One banks. I've sat on 20 venture portfolio companies last 17 years. As a venture investor and portfolio manager, I've looked after a billion-dollar portfolio with well over 100 companies. In addition, I've jointly founded companies from a mere idea or blueprint that have gone on to achieve unicorn distinction. I have a master's degree in international banking and finance, a bachelor's in accounting, and a minor in communications, and I've written and delivered training curriculum for a bank. This year, the Locust Valley Central School District is nearly a $100 million business, the business of education, whose clients are our amazing students, and whose shareholders are our taxpayers and community members, and whose board and administrators steer a ship of top talent which possess the intellectual property which makes our students excel. These, of course, are our teachers, our TAs, and staff, essentially the people who spend seven-plus hours a day shaping the minds of our children and inspiring them. If given the opportunity to serve, here's what I would be focused on: transparency in all matters, shifting some of the committee meetings back to the public board sessions, ensuring retention of the best talent, and embarking on a journey to number one, a journey up the rankings to educational excellence. To do this and to effect change, we must first change something. I need you all on May 21st to vote for a change. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
Good evening. Thank you to the CPC and to the League for hosting this evening, for all of you who are in attendance and those of you at home. My name is George Vasiliou. My wife and I moved into Locust Valley in 2015. She was born and raised out here in Long Island, I in New England. And when we were looking for a place to live, she said Locust Valley is going to remind you of home. And sure enough, as we entered the community, we knew we were home. We have two daughters, Ariana, who will be entering sixth grade next year here in this building, and our youngest, Melina, who will be entering first grade. I come from a family of educators, and I have spent the last 20 years of my life in the field of education. My wife is a teacher in Flushing. My brother and sister-in-law are professors. My sister's a teacher in the city in a Montessori school. My father was a professor. I was the one who didn't go into the classroom but went into administration instead. Starting in Florida, I ran the AmeriCorps, excuse me, I ran a service learning program for the entire county, getting children across our county to be awarded the Florida Academic Scholarship by doing community service. I transitioned here to New York City, where I ran the AmeriCorps program and came up through the Division of Human Resources for the New York City Department of Education. I became the chief of staff there to the CEO, overseeing 400 employees. From there, my mentor, the CEO, still reminds me to this day that Joel Klein poached me and brought me over to the chancellor's office. And in the chancellor's office, I became the deputy chief operating officer, being his liaison to all operational functions throughout the entire city of New York: finance, HR, school construction, school trades, school food, transportation, IT, and the entire finance group. When former deputy mayor Walcott became the chancellor, he had me take over the Division of Financial Operations where I ended my career at the DOE. I oversaw payroll for 147,000 employees. I ensured the processing of close to $8 billion in payables every single year. I oversaw accounting, banking, revenue operations. I also created a collections group in that division. And for a variety of reasons for the DOE, I oversaw the impartial hearing office. I bring that expertise and knowledge, unique to the board table, unique among all trustees, and I began that in 2020. I oversee and was the chairman of the audit committee, and now I chair the Budget and Finance Committees. One of the major lifts that I am most proud of this last year was undertaking an entire lift and revitalization, if you will, of our budget presentations. We owe it to each and every one of you to understand fully where and how your taxpayer dollars are going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we begin the questions, Ralph, we've agreed to about an hour for questions and answers, so just to let you know what our time schedule will be. All right, first question. Nicholas, start with you. What are your three main reasons for wanting your seat on the Board of Education?
Thank you, Barbara. So my main reasons for wanting to participate in the Board of Education is, first off, to give back to the community that's given so much to me. It is such a special thing to participate and to be involved with this community at this level that it's really, really important to me to give back in that way. You know, and I'd say the second one also would be that I want to make sure that this district is in high regards and we are investing in the future for our children. Because not only is it important that all our students are successful, but that they are going to be leaving these halls as top-notch individuals who will be able to compete in the world.
Thank you. Michael?
What motivates me to become a board member is I want Christian and his peers to have the same opportunities as Bella and Mikey. And I want to work on instilling additional transparency above and beyond. Let's build upon all the great work that has been done, but I think we can do more. And essentially, in service to the community, I'd also love to see more people, I appreciate everybody streaming and in the room, but let's get more people in the room, and maybe we can change the format too as well. So essentially, we can have people ask questions on the fly so that we can hear their thoughts real-time and make it available so we can hear them when they call in from the train send in a poll electronically. I want to get more involvement of the community again.
Thank you. George?
First and foremost, I wanted to bring the knowledge and expertise that I have in the field of education to Locust Valley. And I wanted to help support the administration and the community in understanding how our organization operates, what are the roles and responsibilities of everybody, and how we fund those roles and responsibilities. My career in both nonprofit social service and government until currently was a severe passion of mine and one that I felt I was missing now in my current professional career. And giving back to this community where I'm laying my roots, where my children will be educated, where we're growing our family, is precisely where I want to give back to. Finally, I want to make sure that our board collectively focuses on the students first and foremost. We need to make sure that we are focused on each individual student and providing them with the safest, most comfortable, academically rigorous experience they can possibly take beyond these walls. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, start with you on this. And I'm going to do multiples to this part of this, so please understand because there are multiple questions relating to it. What is your view on the IB and AP? What is your view on the IB and AP programs? Michael?
Oh, I'm sorry. So essentially, highly supportive of the IB and AP programs. My two elders are graduates of the International Baccalaureate Program, also AP graduates. I'm supportive of those programs in addition to all programs that we offer in this community, in this district, above and beyond just essentially what the state mandates. You know, some of the colleges accept the IB and AP credits, can actually save you a year of schooling to the extent that you achieve the maximum. For example, Bella's going to finish with four years, she'll have a master's in accounting at the University of Southern California, so she's saving a year in a five-year program because they accepted all the credits from Locust Valley for AP and IB, highly supportive of the programs.
Thank you. George?
Our community has been going back and forth for a while about, are we an IB district or an AP district? And I've been in favor throughout of providing both opportunities to all of our children. I don't think we need to have an either-or situation. We've had many students come back during public comment here in our board meetings discussing their IB experience and their AP experience, and universally, when they've come back, they've shared experiences that those programs within these buildings, thanks to our administration and our faculty, have given them an opportunity to learn how to think. It's not just academic memorization, it's not just reading texts, they're challenged to learn critical reason and thinking. And for that reason, I think we owe it to our community, but also to our students, to make sure we can continue both of those programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
So while attending here in Locust Valley, I did take some IB and some AP courses, and they were fantastic. The instruction from the teachers was amazing, and what they really want to do is challenge our students and myself to really think critically and to develop your own opinion and analyze the information in front of you. So I do support the IB and AP program, and I believe it is the student's choice, and it's, they're great programs.
Thank you. Well, you've sort of touched on this, but there is a little component to the same idea related to it. Do you think the district should continue with the IB program? And if we are reducing our offering for IB, what do you propose we offer to remain competitive in advanced academics? George?
I'm sorry. The question was if we're looking to reduce?
Well, no, first of all, do you think we should continue with the program, number one? And if there is a need to reduce the program offering for IB, what do you propose we offer to remain competitive in advanced academics?
So I don't think there is a need at this point in any way to reduce the IB program, nor reduce the AP program. So I don't think that topic is up for debate or discussion. What I will add, and I'll take a moment of my time to address, I do think we need, and if George was dictator and could wave a magic wand, I believe, and I said this at the DOE at the time too, the education needs to move towards a goal that almost every child has an IEP, as they have in special education. And many of them may be very similar and very on the same track, but the purpose of that is to identify the strengths of each individual student. Where are their passions? Where do they need perhaps extra help? Where do they need to continue? And by providing that kind of support to every single student, maybe IB and AP aren't for all students, maybe we need to provide additional supplemental education programs. We have a very strong relationship with Bosse's. We have many students this year taking programming there, and I think we need to continue that so that every single student feels that they're getting the most out of their experience here. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Barbara, could you just repeat the question?
Well, part of it was, you think the IB program should continue, and the other part of it is, if there were to be changes or reducing the offering, what do you propose we offer to remain competitive in advanced studies, academics?
So, thank you. So I always believe that, you know, it's really not up for discussion right now, but we always have to have our administrators review our curriculum. It's always very important to use a continuous loop feedback in order to improve our curriculum and make it the strongest possible, so that we develop a phenomenal program for our students so that when they leave our halls, they're very prepared in the aspects of life. And in terms of an alternative, I believe it would just be AP, but I don't think that's up for question right now.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Absolutely continue, absolutely continue with the program, with the International Baccalaureate Program. You know, we need to have programs for all of our learners at all levels, but we also need to have programs that continue to attract top colleges for our students and also for our students with technical acumen, and we want to be able to continue with all the programs that we have across the board. That's what brings families back to the community. That's what brings new families to the community. That's what brings families with people who work for this district back. And so essentially, absolutely highly supportive of retaining the program.
Thank you. All right. Nicholas, we'll start with this one. We hear from parents very often. What are your thoughts about hearing more from students, what they want and need from the district?
I think it's critical that we're listening to our students, and they are, if you think about it as a business, this is the business of education, the children are ultimately our customers, and you always want to treat your customer correctly. We always have to think and hear the feedback from the individuals on what's working and what's not working, and we have to constantly assess that and make sure we're bringing it internally, reviewing it with the administrators, reviewing it with the parents, and making sure that we put forth the best product possible.
Thank you. Michael?
So essentially, I think we could do a lot in the way of implementing polling, so essentially electronic polling. We can poll to keep our finger on the pulse of what people are thinking, our students, our faculty, our parents. When I walked through Locust Valley in Bayville and knocked on doors and got signatures, people shared with me unfiltered views of what this district can do for improvement, what would make them happy, what the gaps are. And I think if we give them the opportunity, in a certain circumstances, in an anonymous manner, they'll be happy to share truly what they need to close the gaps for happiness, to keep them here. There are people on my list of 100 signatures that are contemplating leaving the district, and there are families on there that essentially, you know, they have students that are out of the district, but they're considering bringing them back, so it would be wonderful to understand where those gaps are, so that we could close those gaps, bring people back, and expand the enrollment of Locust Valley Bayville Central School District.
Thank you. George?
The question pertained to the hearing of the voice of students. Is that correct?
Correct.
My favorite segments of every board meeting is when we bring students into the room. Every month, we have two representatives of student government come and share the goings-on of the last month. Those are all the highlights, those are all the feel-good moments, and they make them a lot of fun. They make board, it makes, each one of us up here makes us realize why we're doing what we're doing, and why we're putting in the time away from our families for the community. That said, I think we need to identify, and our board currently has had discussions already, how can we get students more involved in the school board? How can we get student government to be able to provide that input? How can we get students involved in our capital planning? They know where their experiences are positive and where they're negative when it comes to our space. They know whether AC in one room is more valuable to them than in another room. So getting that voice, again, gets us to that North Star that I maintain, that the students are what matters first, and what the children need are what matters most. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, start with this one with you. What ideas? Pause the refreshers. Okay, ready? All right. What ideas you have to keep students in our schools and not flowing to private schools?
Thank you. This goes back to the last point. You know, again, I walked through the community, I collected signatures, I have a list of 100 people in support, in fact, I had others that wanted to, we ran out of pages. People shared with me, on that list, we're considering taking our kids out. And, you know, one of the issues that we have is, some of the kids are afraid to use the bathrooms, we have to resolve that. You know, essentially, there are some programs, they're worried about being eliminated, and, you know, we have to make sure that we build upon with the budget we have at this nearly $100 million a year business, essentially that we find the money, you know, for special education, PTA, my understanding is we need more TAs for the programs, we don't have enough, we have to ask ourselves why, and are we allocating the money to keep them, so that everybody has the services they need for all learners at all levels?
Thank you. George?
We need to bring back here in Locust Valley an expectation of excellence, excellence in absolutely everything that we do, and that we do things once, and we do them right, and then we proceed. We need to provide our students with a level of academic rigor that challenges them, that gets back to core subject matters, reading, writing, math, science, and show and demonstrate to our community that we are providing our students with the academic tools to move on into whatever endeavor they may choose. And that includes going to university, beyond university, that also includes students who want to go into trades or to explore other avenues of education. The more opportunities to explore what children are interested in, and we absolutely, Mike is right, with the budget that we have, we can afford to offer students as many opportunities to identify what their passions are, and when they see that they have those opportunities, they won't want to go to private institutions, they'll want to stay right here and attend our schools.
Nicholas?
So, you know, everything I'm going to say is going to echo what George and Mike had just said. You know, one of the most important things that we can do is, you know, keep academic rigor up. We have to really focus on what the children who are leaving the district to go to private schools are looking for, and really show them the programming that we have and the benefits of it, and how they can succeed and have that level of success when they stay within our district.
Okay. Thank you. George, we'll start with this one. With New York State moving to take away funding, what are areas you feel are important to protect?
This year was the most difficult recent budget season that we experienced. Governor Hochul proposed removing the fair funding, which guaranteed base-level funding from the previous year. We would have lost a sizable amount of our budget. That was reversed, and thankfully, that was reversed. Our administrative team did an incredible job working with each and every building to figure out essentially two or three different scenarios, right, up until the last minute when we received that funding. I think we need to continue to look and trust our administration to evaluate all programs, all curricula, and make sure that we are striving for excellence. We will see what happens next year. We will see if we're faced with the same type of cuts. Hopefully, that will not occur. It should not occur, and we will advocate, as we did this year, very strongly to make sure that doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
With, what's going on with the state in potentially cutting funding to the schools is very scary. I mean, for us, we have planned very meticulously in order to prepare for this, but at the same time, it is a huge hit to any school budget. And the one thing we always have to make sure is that we advocate for ourselves and for the best of the district, and we have to speak up and always let our voice be heard about the potential ramifications on a cutting of state aid to the public schools.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
So my view here is essentially, we should go on offense. The state's going to cut back the budgets, that's okay. What we should do is leverage technology. Technology is advancing so fast, companies are leapfrogging one another each month with the rollout of AI and generative AI. Essentially, let's empower our teachers with more tools. Let's ask them what they need. I walk into the classrooms, I see these beautiful Promethium boards, these eboards that they have. Let's give them more technology, let's ask them what they can use to help them do more with less in the event that the state cuts back the budget. Let's empower them, let's poll them, let's have a voice of the employee and say, what do you need? What can we give you? What would be helpful? Let's get them out to the conferences where the technology is demonstrated, so that they can look, they can learn, they can evaluate, and they can bring it back here to help them in teaching our children. They spend seven hours a day with our children shaping their minds, let's give them more technology.
Thank you. Nicholas, go back to you. What do you think are the major issues facing the district?
So the major issues that I see affecting the district are, you know, number one, we just discussed it, is the state aid. You know, the potential looming threat of that removal of that aid to any budget is devastating, and it wouldn't be to us to be to the schools across the island. The next one I'd have to say is the inflation that's taking place. Not only are we experiencing year-over-year extremely high inflation, but this affects us not only at the school level, but also the members of the community. And when you're dealing with this level of inflation and this hidden tax, it not only affects the cost of materials, the cost of labor, and insurance premiums, it makes everything very expensive to run, especially on a fixed budget where we have to plan accordingly.
Thank you. Michael?
So in terms of the current challenges that are facing the district, you know, look, there's been learning loss because of COVID. There's been learning loss because of Teachers College. We need to get the new reading program in, we have three being piloted, I couldn't tell you what the names are, we need more transparency. It'd be wonderful to see a slide with some quantitative qualitative metrics to see how they compare to Teachers College, with check marks and Xs, how they compare or contrast. Let's get the community involved, our shareholders, our taxpayers, the people who live in this community. Let's hear from our teachers, and then, you know, the challenge of retaining quality education in an inflationary environment. You can't print $6 trillion during COVID and not have inflation, but we have to manage it, and we're able to do it, you can do it through the use of additional. And we're able to do it, you can do it through the use of additional technology. We can do more.
Thank you. George?
One of the challenges, and we've been very lucky in our district because of all the positives, we are able to attract talent. We've told the administration, we want the highest quality talent that we can bring in. And there is simply a national teacher shortage across the entire country. People are not going into the profession. This year, as you've probably seen in our presentations for this upcoming school year, we're adding a program to explore the quote unquote "business of education" and hopefully get students interested in becoming teacher assistants. Another major challenge that we're facing, the state budget question, as Nick alluded to, is also driven by a belief that we have substantial reserves. We need to make sure we are carefully and strategically planning for the future in how we expend those reserves. Our district has been extremely fiscally careful. We have a very sizable capital reserve in excess of 13 million. And we've established sound infrastructure across our whole district. We now have the big challenge of deciding where do we want to go next? What are the bells and whistles we want to start to put across our community? Do we want to build a health center that our community members can be attracted to and attend? Do we want to build a state of the art dance and fine art studio with that? Those are the discussions we're having and we're very excited to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Michael, start with you. One of the issues facing many school districts, as well as this one, is relating to mental health issues. How do you feel that this needs to be addressed in the district?
I think that's an excellent question. You know, essentially in service of the community, we need to bring the community in and we need to build consensus. And we need to hear also from our administrators and our teachers. So you have to bring everybody together. You have to get them aligned. You have to hear people's thoughts. You have to bring in the experts to advise. I'm not an expert on this topic.
Okay, thank you. George?
Always dangerous to assume, but I'm assuming that it's being referred to the students. And I hope that it's being referred to the students because that's what we need to be focused on, as I've sort of belabored. We absolutely need experts. We also need to make sure that our community within these walls of the buildings and outside are both verbally and in terms of our actions reassuring every single student that this is in fact a safe community for them to come into, that they want to come into. And whatever it is that they could be struggling with, whether it's their teacher is not available for them to get help or their families are not there, we need to make sure that we're providing a safe space for them, that they're able to get the outreach and the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
You know, mental health is critical, especially to our students because they're coming here in order to learn and to be educated. And having them have a secure and safe space to learn is important. But one of the biggest things that has really transformed over the last 15 years, and it's a technology that's taken place is social media. You know, with the advent and with the acceptance and use of younger and younger generations, I have a unique perspective because I grew up when it was all coming into an inception. And it is a very detrimental technology if it's not handled well and if the students aren't educated on it. It is a self-publishing platform that is something no one can ever run away from. And you have young individuals who are using this inside and outside of school. And we have taken steps in order to address it by putting it together a policy where K through eight, the students aren't allowed to have their phone on their person. It's terrifying when you think about the detriment that the external social networks can have on our community.
Thank you. Michael? Oh, we started with you. Sorry. George? What do you see as a benefit and detriment of using technology for teaching, testing, and communication?
That's an excellent question. And it gets back to an earlier comment I made around individualized education plans for all students, right? When technology is used to broaden a student's exposure, if you have a student who perhaps is reading well beyond her level, what we don't want to do is limit that individual's opportunity. And if we can use technology for that student to be able to enter a classroom, perhaps in middle school or in high school, and engage in a discussion about literature, it needs to be done. That said, I think though we should never throw the baby out with the bathwater, we learned some positive things during COVID and the use of technology in Google classrooms. I don't think our household would function without Google Classroom, thanks to my teacher making sure we know what all the homework is. But that said, to Nick's point, I want to limit the amount of time our students are in front of those screens. I want them touching a book and reading. I want them doing arithmetic. I want them to feel paper and a pen and know how to write and grammar and not have Siri or Google help them with their spell check or their grammar check. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
So, you know, with technology in the classroom, you know, we are in an ever rapidly advancing age with technology from adoption and use, from within the younger generations and going all the way up to the older generations. It is important that we're always open to the adoption of new technology, but there has to be a balance, especially within the school. And when you're too weighted on one side of the scale, issues can always develop. And one of the biggest things we can use with our technology is to always focus on the core curriculum, on making sure that the kids are going back and making sure they're reading, writing, doing arithmetic, as George said, and that we're using the technology as a tool in our schools.
Thank you. Michael?
So I've spent the last 17 years in investment banking, working on the digitization and electronification of investment banking workflows to essentially reduce operational risk and do more for our clients. You know, when you consider for the school, essentially, you have to set guardrails for use for technology. And I want to hear from the parents, I want to hear from the community. And I want to hear from the experts, the teachers in the room with our kids seven hours a day. And our administration essentially, let us know the additional tools you need and let's set the guardrails. I wear these glasses now because COVID, I work seven days a week, 12 plus hours a day, I ruin my eyesight. It's getting a little better, but I have to wear these glasses now. You got to set guardrails. So I give myself breaks from the screens, but I need the glasses now. So same thing for our kids. Let's be thoughtful about how we're using technology, how we're deploying it, and let's monitor their use and do it in a good and healthy way. Also, we live in a resource constrained world. So we have to be thoughtful about that as well in terms of using reams and reams and reams of paper. I think it's still great to use some ditto's and write. We're here taking notes, writing down, jotting our thoughts. I still like to write. I type 130 words a minute on a good day. Well, maybe not, but in any case, technology is important. We should use it more, but let's have guardrails for our children.
Okay, thank you. All right. Nicholas, back to you. What are the highlights of the budget that you feel most positive about? Share some areas you would like to improve while still being physically responsible, responsible to students and seniors?
So, you know, some of the highlights of the budget is that we are being very sound in our thought and process on presenting it to the community. And, you know, one of the big highlights to me is just what we're going to be doing for the capital projects and what we're putting in on the propositions. We have certain things that need to be fixed. We have to remain in the upkeep of our buildings and facilities so that they can last another 100 years. And for example of that is, you know, the Babel Slate Roof. We want to replace that because it's a 100-year-old building. It's absolutely gorgeous and it's something that we want to make sure is around for the next 100 years.
Thank you. Michael?
Forgive me as I was reaching down to pick up the paper. Would you kindly repeat the question?
What are the highlights of the budget that you feel most positive about? Share some areas you would like to improve while still being physically responsible and responsive to students and seniors?
Look, I think it's a good budget. I think it's important this budget passes. What I'd like to improve is, again, we've got some learning loss from COVID. We've got some deficits in the reading programs. So I want to make sure that we cover that, that we allocate the funds that are needed to get those who have gaps back on track. You know, to Nick's point, we have to continue to invest in this infrastructure, in this beautiful community, these buildings. But I also want to hear from the community. I want to hear what they think is important in terms of future capital investment. We've got beautiful turf field out there that the kids enjoyed and we wanted for years and years and years. And finally, it happened. Let's talk to our parent council, our volunteers, let's hear from them. They have their finger on the heartbeat of the community as well. I want their feedback as well. And, you know, so again, we have to invest in the reading programs. TAs, that's the other thing, it's important. We have trouble getting TAs, we need more TAs, maybe we have to pay them a little more. I don't know. But let's understand why and let's get the necessary coverage that we need for special education and so that all our learners are covered. Let's find the money in the budget. It's $96 million. I know I keep saying 100. It's $96 million budget. Surely, we can cover everybody.
Thank you. George?
Many of you have probably seen our presentations, but for those of you who haven't, we start our roadshow and we do some highlights for everyone. We have 82 athletic teams in our district between the middle school and high school. 1,222 kids are enjoying that competition. We have 998 students who are able to participate in orchestra, band, chorus, and theater. That's 53% of our population is involved in the fine and performing arts. We have a total of 75 clubs. We offer free AP and IB testing for our students. Many districts, the parents have to pay for that testing. We offer free driver's education to all students within our district. Those are the kind of highlights that matter to me the most. We struggled and produced a budget that I am very proud of. This budget ensured that all those programs continued. And going forward, the question will be, how do we maximize our capital budget to make sure we're preparing Locust Valley and maintaining the 100 years of tradition while also planning for education in 2025, 2028, and beyond? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This will be our last question. We'll start with Michael. Outside of attending Board of Education meetings, what is the school board member's role and responsibility? How would you advocate for the community and the well-being of our students? And what actions will you take to connect with the sentiments of the community?
I really enjoyed walking through the community, meeting people, and standing on their doorsteps, hearing their unfiltered views of what we can do better. Everybody's very proud of where we live. We have a fantastic school district, we have a fantastic community. We're all very lucky, all very grateful. Essentially, continue to meet, meet with, get more involved with SAPDA, our special education PTA, continue to meet with our parents' council and our volunteers. We have a lot of folks here that are volunteering, not just on the councils, but robotics and across our athletics programs. So continue to meet and speak with people. Potentially set up a regular forum where people be comfortable to come in and just have a casual conversation, maybe a breakfast or coffee, maybe it's once a month. And invite people to come in and just share their thoughts so we can take them away and try to implement them.
Thank you. George?
This is a question that our board often discusses and discusses and discusses. What is the role of a trustee? We need to maintain a 30,000-foot level and set the priorities for the district and enable our administration, who are the experts, to advise us on what the implementation will look like of those priorities. We need to make sure that we enable them to do the curriculum reviews, do the programmatic reviews, the establishment of new programs, and advise us on what needs to be implemented. As for partnering with our community, it's our responsibility to be available as much as possible. We need to listen to individuals' concerns. And most importantly, we need to help our community members and facilitate their communication with the faculty and with the administration. We need to help the community know what communication norms look like for the community. Where do they go with what concerns that they have? Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas?
You know, outside of the responsibilities, you really have to think about what the characteristics of a board member are. And it's always trying to effectively communicate with the community, build a consensus with them, make a decision, make an inform, process the information, be a leader, and be a team player with the community. We always have to get our community's feedback. Those are one of the most critical components that we can do as a Board of Trustee here. And being accessible is paramount to hearing not only what our students need, but also what the rest of the community members believe and feel that we need for our district.
Thank you. And then we'll go closing statements. George will begin with you.
Allow me to begin by thanking again the CPC and the League for facilitating this evening. And also thank you to Mike and to Nick for participating. It's not an easy decision to come forward and to put your hat in the ring and to serve the community. So I appreciate that. I want to thank my wife as well and my two little girls at home because we miss a lot of evenings at home when we're doing this. I thoroughly enjoy being a trustee of this community. And it was a great, humbling honor when in 2020, they asked for applications and that group of trustees accepted me onto their board. It was a greater honor a year later when the community elected me. And I would ask that you would give me that honor again. I want to continue to bring the unique knowledge and expertise that I have in the field of education to the board table and to our community. And I want to continue to make Locust Valley the community that each and every person in this room and each individual at home watching believe it is and will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you to the League of Women's Voters and Coordinated Parent Council for having me. Thank you to George and Nick for spending your time today. I'd be humbled and greatly appreciative and excited to receive your vote in this election. As someone with kids, both in and having graduated from the district, I know the future is bright for our students. I also know that we can do more through hard work, transparency, partnership, having regular input via the thoughts and inspiration of this community at the board meetings. We need to focus on raising our standards and getting our finger back on the pulse of our students', teachers', and parents' happiness. Be instituting a voice of the employee and other online polls, community polls. Let's leverage scorecards for our committees to ensure consistent, transparent reporting at each meeting, leveraging quantitative and qualitative metrics that are measurable. Let's define our district's goals and success, more specifically, what success looks like. As we look ahead toward each new school year, let us measure ourselves and hold ourselves accountable to the community, our shareholders, who we represent to show on a regular basis that we're having the intended positive impact on matters like reading scores when we leverage our nearly $100 million operating budget. our nearly $100 million operating budget to deliver the business of education. Thank you all so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Nicholas?
I would first like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Coordinated Parent Councils, and everyone attending and who are watching digitally. I really appreciate being able to give back to my community. It really fills my cup. I have enjoyed being involved for this past year, and I would love to serve this district again for the next three years. We have so much to accomplish, so many good things to get done in this district to where it will lead and be a leader in the Long Island vicinity. So I thank you, everyone, for today, and please go support the budget and go vote on May 21st.
Okay. We want to thank the candidates, you in the audience, and those of you watching us live stream. And remember to vote on Tuesday, May 21st, for them and the budget they refer to as well. Also, in the back, there is some publication from League Women Voters. It's a directory of public officials. Please feel free to take one on your way out. Thank you, and have a good evening, everyone.